Council regular meeting to order, Tuesday, June 3rd, 12:00 PM. Could we stand and have the pledges of the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Do we have a roll call, Beth?
Nelson.
Yes.
Matt Sinco.
Yes.
Good job.
Yes.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Agenda.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Proceeds our general discussion. First of all, I'd like to welcome everyone here in the chamber today. Bennett from the Sentinel, and particularly you people that are watching over television at your easy chairs at home. Today, we got general discussion, the way we handle our general discussion. If anybody has any comments or concerns, particularly, or good things to say about the city. We ask them to stand up to the podium, state their name and address, and the council cannot make any decisions under the general discussion, but they're always willing to listen to what you have to say. So, have we got anybody that's got anything on general discussion today? If not, we'll move right along to citizens. Thumbs up, the word, John?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing.
Your Honor.
Thumbs up to all of the volunteers that are sitting at the different polling sites today, and a reminder to everybody to go and vote in the primary election. Lamar's, I know, is open until nine o'clock, and we vote in the lower level of the convention center.
You voted yet?
I did.
Okay, I just wanted to check. Rex?
I'll pass, thank you.
Okay, moving on to consent items. All items listed on our consent agenda will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on those items unless a request is made prior to the time the council votes on the motion. Today, we have five of them. Approval of the May 20th, 2014 regular meeting minutes. Number two is a list of the bills for period ending 5/31/14. Number three is the urban revitalization tax exemption requests. Number four is a contract for transportation services with CERTS. And I see we have representatives here today. Number five is renewal of the liquor license, Mr. Pease's Pizza and Sports Grill. Does any council member have any questions on any of these, or would like to pull forward?
Did CERTS have anything that they wanted to present?
I was going to say, Dwight, do you have anything that you'd like to share with us?
Well, Dwight Lang, Executive Director of Simcoe and Sunland Regional Transit, and I did want to introduce you to Brenda Behrens, who's the interim transit director.
Hi, Brenda.
I don't know if you've met her yet, but if you have anything good to say, it's me. If you have complaints, Brenda can come up and take this.
I think that's called delegating.
But, no, I just, we're just honored to continue this relationship with the city and provide these services, which we feel is a very needed and essential service. And we've got, as you know, from over by the police station, there's a number of buses, and we've got a few at another apartment complex that are running every day, except Sunday. So, we're glad to offer the service and to be here.
And the rates for the riders are staying the same?
Yes, they are.
Proposed contract.
Yep.
Well, we're glad to have you in town, Dwight.
Yes.
It's a real benefit to our cities, particularly our senior citizens here in Lamar's, and I think it's been well-used and our program well-going. Thanks a lot.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve consent items, one through five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made second to approve items, one through five. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Under action items. The first one is changes to the water ordinances. Changes are proposed to various sections pertaining to water in Lamar's Code of Ordinances. The changes are minor and, for the most part, are needed to reflect policy and practices already being used by city staff. Council approved the first reading of the ordinance on their May 20th, 2014 meeting. I didn't hear a motion. Or somebody ask questions?
Motion approving the second reading of ordinance, number 920, modifying sections 90.06, 90.08, 91.02, 91.08, 91.10, 93.07 of the Lamar's Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Motion made second approving second reading of the ordinance, number 920, modifying sections 90.06, 90.08, 91.02, 91.08, 91.10, 93.07 of the Lamar's Code of Ordinances. Could we have a roll call, Beth?
Matt?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Erky?
Yes.
Rex Sinco?
Yes.
And on staff recommendation, I'll make a motion waiving the third reading of ordinance, number 920, of the Lamar's Code of Ordinances.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made second waiving the third reading of ordinances, number 920, of the Lamar's Code of Ordinances. Could we have a roll call on that, Beth?
Good job.
No.
Matt?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Rex Sinco?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion adopting ordinance, number 920, modifying sections 90.06, 90.08, 91.02, 91.08, 91.10, 93.07 of the Lamar's Code of Ordinances on its second reading.
Second.
Motion made second adopting ordinance, number 920, modifying sections 90.06, 90.08, 91.02, 91.08, 91.10, 93.07 of the Lamar's Code of Ordinances on its second reading. Could we have a roll call on that, Beth?
Matt?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Good job.
Yes.
Rex Sinco?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, moving on, Brown Miller Investment Request. I said Brownville, it looks like we had all the Brownville boys here. Brown Miller Investment Request. Brown Miller Investment is making a request on two items today. The first one is a relocation of an existing sanitary sewer, which is 12-inch. And the second one is a property tax exemption rebate, which is a five-year rebate in Chapter 8. Follows as following. Business expansion and employment increases of two to five more employees. The Brown Miller Investment owns the real estate. The total sales and service operates the business. The project is an 80-foot by 80-foot new building for a body shop attached to existing body shop building. Building plans are attached, and the sanitary sewer map is attached. The aerial drawing is attached. The taxed rebate schedule is attached, showing the value of $100,000. And Scott, do you want to share some things with us on this?
Yes.
In regard to what we're talking about here, particularly the 12-inch?
Yeah, the 12-inch, if you look on the sheet, the sanitary sewer map, highlighted in red is the location of the 80-foot by 80-foot building. And so, it's diagonally squarely on top of the 12-inch is the proposal. There is a sanitary manhole that would also lie within the confines of the building. In visiting with Brent and also evaluating what we've done in the past, we do have a couple of buildings in Lamar's that are built on top of sanitary sewers. The oldest one is the courthouse, county courthouse. The cornerstone there is 1901. And so, that's had an 8-inch sanitary underneath that building for quite some time. We also have sanitary sewer and storm sewer underneath what is now Norham, used to be Harker's building. So, we've had those situations in the past. Most recent one that we approved was SCS, Chemical Sanitizing Systems. CSC, sorry.
CSS.
Or CSS, thank you. They located on top of, and that is depicted on this drawing where it says 21, excuse me, 2711. Down in that region, there is a pole building over the top of both sanitaries. In none of the other cases that I'm aware of is a manhole inside the building. That would be not a good move on the part of the city to allow it, or on the part of the private entity to allow it either. And the reason for that is you would not want the sewer gases that are created inside of a collection system to escape inside of a building. That's the whole purpose on a plumbing system, on why there's vents through the roof. And so, I would discourage any movement on our part to allow a building to be built on top of a sanitary manhole. I'm not opposed to the building being built on top of the sanitary sewer, as long as adequate provisions are made in the structure. And what I mean by that is the footings that would lie within maybe 10 feet of the center of that sanitary on either side would need to be extra reinforced to make sure that it can compensate for any differential settlement that might occur because of the sanitary. All of that aside, these gentlemen are asking you for the consideration of moving it and getting it out from underneath the proposed location. So, I took a look at that, and I would say somewhere in the 30,000 to 35,000 range is what it would take to move the 12-inch and get it so that it would be along the two property lines that have the existing 10-inch sanitary already there. So, not too unlike where it goes through CSS, we'd parallel the 10-inch and the 12-inch if you would agree to move in the sanitary. And we would do it between manholes, 2709 and 2707, in which case, we would be adding, instead of just one manhole between those two adjacent manholes, we would have to have three.
Is it an option to move the manhole on the existing sewer line?
Yes.
How much would that cost?
Just the move and the closure of the existing, so probably less than 10. That's what I was going to ask, is could we just abandon the existing manhole that's inside the proposed building? And then, just abandon it altogether, make it safe, you know, for sewer gas and... Through flexible couplings, yes. However, the distance between 2707 and 2709 would be in excess of what your cleaning equipment could span. That doesn't mean we wouldn't be able to clean it. They could come from the top.
Backwards.
They could go the right direction, which is from bottom up, or they could go from top down.
That's, yeah.
But otherwise, if we just moved that manhole north, so kind of lined up with that 10-inch, then that would meet the span down to 2709?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you tell, which one's actually downhill, Scott? 2707 or 2709?
07 is lower.
Okay, so, okay, I wondered about that, okay.
It's heading north to the old treatment plant.
Right.
Brett, do you have questions or comments?
Oh, yeah, I thought it would. My name's Brett Rommiller with Total Sales and Service from Brown Miller Investments. Looking at the map here, I was wondering, the sewer line, sanitary sewer line that runs through the proposed building is actually a secondary sewer line. It's not used anymore, I'm understanding. I think they're tied together back by 2701 and 2711, talking to Ron. So, if that line with 2705 backs up, it'll go all the way back through the other one. I was also under the assumption that with the 2704 and 2705, that main line, I think they might be tied together right by Norham already, bypassing it, because a couple of years ago, I talked to Ron, and he said they capped off the line going under Norham and ran them together to get around Norham, because they didn't want it going underneath Norham when they built, or Harker's in the day. I was just proposing, if it's tied together there, could we go back between 2704 and 2705, where the two lines intersect, and tie them together there? And let that 12-inch run into the 8-inch or 10-inch, whatever it is? That way, flushing through 2705 and out, because I know 2705 we have with Blue Diamond Truck Wash, and we have a flow problem. We've had flow problems because there's nothing behind pushing it. So, I was proposing, if you could tie them together right there with a manhole between 2704 and 2705, it might help the flow of the sanitary sewer line with our other truck wash.
But that's upstream, though, isn't it? Well, everything that Brent stated is also correct, so I wasn't quite done. They are redundant lines, no doubt about it. They weren't redundant prior to the lift station being abandoned by McDonald's. Then they were both active, and it took both in order to accommodate peak flows from that lift station. That lift station has been since abandoned, and so, the redundant lines are not necessarily needed at this time. Tying the 12-inch to the 10-inch and upstream from their proposed building is not possible because of the 12-inch is the one that needs to be taken, relocated, and it's lower than the 10-inch. So, but what he states in both cases are correct. Up by now Norham, formerly Harker's, specifically on Sixth Street South, years ago, before Norham even owned it, we did take the 10-inch to the 12-inch. Again, the 10-inch is higher than the 12-inch. In this case, to do what his second point, the 12-inch needs to flow into the 10-inch, but that can't happen because it'd be uphill. But over on Sixth, we could do it because it was the 10-inch going to the 12-inch, and it was higher. So, that was done, and therefore, the pipe that is currently underneath the Norham building is specifically used only by the Norham building. And no other public sewage from other locations go underneath that building.
And Scott, where are the flow issues that Mr. Brown Miller referred to? Where are they at on this?
The issues of low flow?
Well, his concern about at the truck wash.
Yeah, that was low flow, and it's 2705.
Okay.
Heading up to the northeast there?
That's got very low flows in it, upstream of his location. So, when they discharge into it, there's nothing upstream to keep the flow going.
For sure.
And does that line in, that 10-inch, or does it continue on, just it's not back on here?
On the bottom of the page, 2701 is the end of the line.
That's the end, okay.
Of the 10-inch, and 2711 is the end of the line for the 12-inch.
So, that's the high point.
And it's the high point.
It's flowing northeast from there.
Mm-hmm. To the whole plant.
All of it goes northeast.
To the whole plant.
Yep.
Okay, so tied together isn't possible south of the building, but what about at that intersection to the north that I was questioning for a new manhole? Could they be tied together there, and would that potentially solve both their current issue with the truck wash and moving the manhole? Just to that little, it's just straight north of the building.
Well, the flow coming from his Blue Diamond in 2705.
Right.
Would be flow, would have to flow into the 12-inch at that location, relocated manhole location.
So, that would be possible, then? I mean, is there a benefit to tying them together there for flow purposes or not?
Well, up on Sixth, they're already tied together.
Okay.
So, yes, it would be.
Which would help resolve his problem, or the issue at...
It doesn't add flow upstream of his location, so I don't know that it would help.
No.
By discharging it sooner into a lower sewer system, it might help some.
Okay.
So, if...
But I wouldn't want to guarantee that soon here.
No, okay. So, if you remove the circled manhole and put a new manhole in where the two cross?
That's what Delana just proposed.
Right. But then, what you, you leave the sewer in, is that going to be an issue for them when they build their building?
Again, I don't think so. It certainly wasn't for the courthouse, it wasn't for the Harker's building, it wasn't for CSS.
And as long as we can clean and use our cameras and everything under there, we can still check and do whatever work and maintenance needs to be done as far as making sure that stuff is where it's supposed to be. How old are those lines? Or is that line, I guess, that 12-inch?
I believe the 12-inch went in in the Jellifold era, so that would have been 69 through 71 timeframe.
So, much newer than the one under the courthouse, I assume, with 1901.
It's newer than that, for sure. The 10-inch, on the other hand, I don't have a date in line there, but that would be a super-old line. Maybe similar to the courthouse, I'm not sure. That is an older line. So, at least the 80 by 80 would be built on top of a much newer line. That's relative.
You're talking putting a new manhole where the two intersect, on the south one or the north one?
The south.
So, it's down the north one?
Down the north.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure. North of the circle, right? Yeah.
The potential is that the manhole is put in, the flow go down further because it's going to go down to the 12-inch from Blue Diamond Truck Wash.
Yes.
But that still doesn't, there's still no other businesses or anything pushing that flow.
Pushing water in.
So, therefore, that's why you're saying it could work, it could not work, because I don't have anybody else on the other side to push it. So, what these guys got to do is recruit somebody to go across the street from Blue Diamond to build a business that has flow, and that'll relieve any of your problems. That would be helpful.
I think you had that question.
I just wanted to make sure that was stated publicly.
I think when CSS went down, you know, when they started losing business or whatever happened there, that's kind of when we noticed the problem, about a year and a half ago.
I think that's exactly, and that's what Scott's saying, that makes sense. Because if we don't have any flow, it's just going to sit there.
And since then, with Blue Diamond, now we pump the pits every month. We have a guy come suck them out, just to make sure we're not getting any fats down the sewer. But I know last week, we had the city back out because we had a sewer plugged, and they had to, they couldn't get through it, so we had another guy come do it.
But if we get that tight, the 12-inch gets down a little farther versus 10-inch, that can't...
It can't hurt.
It can't hurt, it's going to help.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know the dynamics of that, you know? The bigger the tube, the slower the flow. So, if that's going to hurt us, or be better, I don't know.
No, I think what the, the 12-inch has definitely a predominant slope to it, this water down in the ground. But you don't know if that's going to help. But it doesn't appear that leaving the line in underneath the building would be a detriment. And obviously, you can't put a manhole, because you sure wouldn't want the gases going up to a paint booth on top of that. That could be disastrous. So, we got to do something about that, but whether we relocate the whole line or just put, change the manholes, it looks like we've got a lot of stuff in the area. We should be able to use some of what we got in the area, because we don't know how many people using it. You do not need a 12-inch and a 10-inch for the amount of flow in that region. Right, that's my, that's my...
So, you're saying tying them together would be fine from a logistics standpoint?
Yes, if Ron told that to Brent, I can believe it, because by taking that lift station by McDonald's off, that took the entire southern and southwestern flow off the system. And what allowed us to do that was the 24-inch diameter interceptor sewer in 1997. That's when the 12-inch got built, and we could eliminate that lift station.
So, is there any sort of, we talked about in joking fashion about another business, but it's, what type of flow would be, would get us in trouble if we abandoned?
Oh, boy, you couldn't, other than a major wet industry, you couldn't put enough buildings out there.
Could you put another truck wash across?
To surpass the design capacity of those lines.
Because I assume that uses a lot of water.
One of them, not to mention, you don't need two ever.
Yeah.
I mean, it would take, it would take a major wet industry to surpass 12 and 10. You know, so what you could do, if these guys are okay with it, when I spoke with Brent, he wasn't sure he was tickled about building a building on top of the sewer. And for the obvious reason. But if he was okay with that, you and the city could get by with the one line for now, reserving judgment on relocating at a later date when the need arises, and therefore, save your money today.
That's what I was kind of getting at, is if we just abandon the one that's under his building and leave everything well enough as it is, and see how it works out. If it's not working a year from now, we have to maybe, or you know, whatever the timeframe. But if we can get by without even moving a manhole at this point...
Well, you...
You'd have to take it out. We'd take it out.
To abandon the line underneath the building, you're making a decision to abandon it all the way to the south-southwest.
And that's the newer line and thinner line.
Because that 12-inch is lower.
Yeah.
So, there's no way to accommodate any flow that might be in that line.
Okay, okay.
So, really, the Brown Millers would have to concede a building on top of that line, recognizing there's very little flow in it. And how far down is the 10-inch underground?
I don't know.
Have you... Because that's going to depend on how much footings, and like you said, maybe some extra compaction or something like that. But if it's down quite a ways, let's say it's down six feet or something, I don't know. All of a sudden, there's not much that they're going to build on their slab. I don't know the answer to that, Rex, but it's probably six to eight feet total depth. And if his building has no basement, which it doesn't, four foot, frost-free footing... Then it's not going to cost him to realize it. It's just going to be something that he's going to know is always there, but it has been abandoned. Yeah, and the extra reinforcing I'm talking about is for a building the style he's building, you're probably talking even a half dozen 20-foot sticks of rebar. Yeah, right. Is the extra I'm talking about. Right, which is roughly nothing on a grand sculptor's. It's hardly nothing, that's right.
Is it possible to tie, to put two manhole holes in where they cross, where both to the south and to the north, and just cut that chunk of line, and just let the chunk of line there, abandon it?
Other than the 12-inch, it isn't going to flow again to the south of that point, because it's lower. The only way to keep flow moving from 2711 through 2710, 279, on up to 2707 is to keep that 12-inch intact for now. But that also means they would have to concede building on top of it. So, if we gave you 15 grand of money to do whatever is necessary to satisfy them, then you could get that to take place?
Whether it's moving the manhole or tying it in or whatever.
Right. How do you guys feel about building on top of it?
It's not our first choice, but it's... Talked to my contractor, the first time I talked to him, he says, "I don't want to do it at all." I talked to him last week again, he says, "Well, we could probably make it work, we had to." What is the stipulation if there is a problem underneath that building with the sewer? You have the right of way to do what you got to do to fix it, so...
Well, that's negotiable. So, if a problem develops on the, if they agree to leave the 12-inch underneath the building, if a problem develops with that segment underneath the building, are we going to chop through his building to go after our line? Please say no. No, we wouldn't find them.
No, we wouldn't.
I just, I wasn't sure how it worked.
So, we could put that in the whole harmless agreement? That's what I'm saying.
But if the contractor damaged the sewer while he was building, then yes.
With that exception, I agree, Delana. We got to use due diligence not to damage it while you're building your building.
Right. They have to do what they can to protect it, but likewise, we wouldn't chop through the building to work on it.
And so...
And so, then you would have us, an agreement today between the council and you guys, that if something should happen to that 12-inch underneath the building, making it unusable, we would have, we would force our hands to relocate it at that time.
Right, to do it.
At our expense.
And structurally, leaving that line there is not going to affect their construction.
Yeah, but if your contractor says that structurally it has a problem, then you got to come back to council, and you got to say, "These guys say no, we can't build it." I mean, I think that's what you got to do.
But you also said that you, I mean, in your estimates, you're two foot, that sewer's two foot lower than he's ever going to be. I can't see how a contractor would even come close to that.
I don't think...
Well, I think what he might be worried about is it's a clay tile. Right. If the clay tile...
If the clay tile fractures and caves in.
Okay, okay.
It creates a void, if, if Murphy's law kicks in, it created it right underneath the foot. And so now you got a void underneath the footing, it's not a good idea. I think that'd be what.
And that's what I was asking too, does it affect it, could it affect them structurally?
It could under that event, and that's why I would put extra twenty foot bars up to, and centered on the sewer line going both ways.
Bridget.
Yeah, with the attempt to bridge any soft material now or in the future, it would simply bridge it.
Right.
But what I'm doing is I'm trying to give Scott the authority to spend fifteen thousand city money to deal with brown millers and the contractor.
And get it done.
And if they don't, can't get it done, then they got to come back to us, because that's the spending limit I'm giving them.
Is time of the essence here?
It's prelim, it's preliminary right now, so just trying to see if.
So I mean, if you, if we work something out in two weeks or whatever with the contractor and brown millers.
Because you want Ron and you both sitting with the contractor.
But if we do the up to fifteen thousand now, then we don't have to revisit it again if it can be done.
We don't have to revisit it as long as it gets done.
And I think what we're saying is, we want this project to proceed, so whatever doesn't work, we'll have to address it and make it work.
And then on the, on the other item, number two, did we have a abatement, rebate, anything like that the first time around? When, when the truck wash went in?
When the truck washed in.
Yeah, Blue Diamond, yes.
But it's only on new buildings, that's why it's code, um, chapter eight of new buildings.
Right, but I mean, it's been utilized before.
Before we get back to that one, before we go to that, let's, let's decide what we're going to do here on this.
Well, they're together in the same motion.
But Brett, do you feel comfortable the way we're going on that?
I believe, I talked, when I talked to the contractor, we didn't know how deep the sewer was, and I really still don't know. And that's kind of one of the factors that'll play into it. But I do know, I've talked with, um, the prep, you know, the guys going to prep the site to do it. We're going to put three foot of fill in over top of this site anyway, average of three foot. So I think we'd be plenty, I think the sewer would be plenty deep enough, so it shouldn't create a structural problem for us to build over top, assuming that we don't have to tear it up someday, you know, like you said.
I'd be totally in favor of going with what Rex's proposal is, is just give the money and if, if, if for some reason that didn't work out, then it would come back, but it sounds to me like that's a very workable amount, isn't it, Scott?
It is if we leave the sewer under the building.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's what our assumptions are.
Yeah.
If, if it doesn't work out, then we got to come back.
I'd make a motion approving the brown miller.
We had just a couple of things on it. Property tax exemption thing.
Oh.
Oh, it was, uh, just basically, what was the time period of the previous exemption then? I was just.
This is, this is Iowa code, this is five years, it's an Iowa code.
Right.
Seventy-five, sixty-five.
Previously though, what was the?
The one given to five-year partial.
Okay, for how much was the rebate?
Uh, that's got it. Well, we were going to rebate, estimate at forty-seven, seventy.
Okay, and how much did we spend on that road and everything there?
We got a rise grant of one hundred sixty-five. The city paid about two hundred thirty.
And we're looking at approximately over a five-year period, another sixty-five hundred?
This chart is based upon today. And we know the property taxes on businesses are not going to be the same the next five years. We're going to be, was it ninety-five, ninety, eighty-five, eighty? So that has not been calculated on this form.
So the maximum would be, would be about sixty-five hundred?
Or another problem we've got, Delana, is the hundred thousand was just to give a barometer of, in increments of a hundred. This estimate did not come from them.
Oh.
So I asked Bill to create a spreadsheet for a hundred thousand just to give you an idea. But if the building comes in at two hundred, then it would be double that figure. A hundred and fifty, it would be one and a half times that figure. So I don't know, I don't know what the, the cost estimate on the building is.
Are you at that point, Brett, where you have that?
We're close, I should have it this week.
Okay.
But I'm, uh.
So for every a hundred thousand, the, the tax break would be the sixty-six hundred dollars over a five-year partial.
Oh, unless, the, the exception of what Rex said with the proposed decreases in commercial.
Yeah.
Because that applies to industrial as well.
In, in rough terms, they end up getting about two and a half to three years of credit for the total, but we're also getting money every year too.
On that.
We won't, you know, put brick on the outside, make it nice, make it fancy, we'll assess it.
And this isn't one that fits into that abatement?
No, we never assess.
Oh, that's right, the guy up there assesses, we just collect.
Scott, this isn't an, an industry that fits into the abatement where they can apply directly to the county and we don't have to mess around with rebate?
No.
This is state, isn't it?
No, no, this is a city. City's chapter eight. Yeah.
So that abatement doesn't apply then?
Well, this is by, this, under the city code, it is an abatement. What you're thinking is that under the state statute, it's an exemption altogether. So once filed at the county, the assessor and auditor don't collect the taxes.
Right.
This taxes, they pay.
Yeah.
They bring in paid tax receipts and we reimburse. And we're always after that.
But they wouldn't be eligible for the one where they don't pay it at all?
No, and all we did was mirror the state statute for businesses that didn't fit in the warehousing criteria, which we thought was limited.
Yeah. This way, you're, you're the sole judge on this, that doesn't follow state rules.
And this, just for clarification for the public, this only affects the new structure, it doesn't affect their taxes on the existing structure?
Absolutely correct.
And you're pretty confident on your job increase of two to five people?
Yeah.
And those two, two to five would buy houses?
Yeah, they could.
Ready?
Most approving the brown miller investment request for up to fifteen thousand dollars to relocate sanitary manhole or other items and, and an industrial property tax exemption per chapter eight of the Mars Code ordinances to facilitate the proposed body shop building.
Second? Second. Uh, do we want to add something to that, that if they can't come up with a workable solution at fifteen thousand? I don't want to give brown miller the idea of fifteen thousand, it's all the city's willing to.
Yeah, if it goes over fifteen thousand, you got to come back. Get it added to the motion somehow.
Okay.
Plus, it would be under an agreement, right?
Right.
Subject to a whole harmless agreement.
Yeah.
But, and the contractor's got to be comfortable with it also, so that's a key part of it.
Sure.
Okay, there's been motion made in second approving brown miller investment for fifteen thousand dollars. Or comeback request for the relocation of an existing sanitary sewer and consideration of an industrial property tax exemption per chapter eight of Lamar's Code ordinances to facilitate the proposed body shop building.
Except that it was existing sanitary manhole, not the sewer.
Oh, I'm sorry, existing man, oh yeah, existing mentor, existing sanitary manhole. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carrying. Thanks Brett, does that give you a sense of direction here?
Yes, thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did go by there yesterday and I see every bay was full in that, in that body shop, so you must be doing all right out there.
Yeah, it's pretty good, so.
We appreciate what you people are doing for the city of Mars. Okay, uh, discussion, John?
Nothing.
Clark?
Um, nothing at all, thank you.
Okay.
Nothing today.
Man, we're flying. Rex?
Only to comment on the detention, retention basins seemed to work well over the weekend. I drove around and the only area I saw underwater was the area down there of a soccer field. That was under about twelve inches of water, the whole thing. Was that because it couldn't flow through that drainage quick enough or did, I think it was even over the road.
I didn't get to be out there, so I'd have to find out from your eyes what, what exactly happened.
Well, from the road back towards St. James, it was just one huge lake. So something was stopping the flow.
Could be that there's triple thirty-six inch pipe underneath that rectrail out there, and I think that probably needs some cleaning.
Okay. That's the first time I've seen it back up there, so.
The intersection of seventy-five and three, we've got a problem with that. I sent Public Works out there the last time it happened. And the storm sewers were open, uninstructed, at least at the access points that we gained access. And yet it persists in backing up at that intersection. So when I was there, it wasn't too catastrophic, it wasn't certainly catastrophic like the last time I was there. This time it was backed up from the center line of seventy-five to the east.
Business seventy-five?
Business seventy-five to the east. But that, that still was a significant amount of water backed up in that intersection, so I'm not, again, I'm not, I think a study needs to be done on the storm sewers that are leading away from that intersection on why, why it's not being able to handle it.
Could, could one be caved or something?
It's possible.
Is that a problem that's just occurred since the work was done there?
They were in those manholes, they're clear.
Okay.
I just think, it's like Scott said, maybe not big enough to handle that much flow anymore.
It's been an issue in a lot of heavy rains.
Yes.
Now, this storm was the second time I've seen the water come down Second Street and go over the top of the highway onto my property. Actually run through my parking lot back to the neighbors. It crowned that highway, that's only the second time I've seen it. But that, all that neighborhood down there does not have, to the south, does not have storm sewers. It pretty much uses the flow of the street to get the water out. And I think a lot of that water is continuing to go on down to the north and add to the problem.
Goes down pretty fast though, doesn't it?
Oh yeah, it goes down a lot.
I mean, it didn't hang around for two days.
It's almost like it's not breathing. I, I just wonder if there's an air gap in there or something, it just.
The intersection of Second Avenue East and Sixth Street North. So it's the intersection on six going over the railroad tracks, as if you're going out to the municipal park. Anyway, that intersection, that's a T intersection, that was, um, I don't know, probably a full six inches over at the top of curb. So it was well into the front yards of the people that lived to the north of that intersection. There, we did replace the intake, so we have a much greater chance of getting the water in the pipe. But I, I think the pipe is too small in that particular case, going, going away from it.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Scott? The airport master plan, as I mentioned last time, would become available to the committee members. So we do have a preliminary draft and, and what I stated last time still holds. The committee, the advisory committee's last task is to take the document that they will, will be given now and over the next couple of weeks, if you could browse that, comment on it. If you don't have any comments, that's fine, but if you do, either contact Bolton and Make Direct or contact my office and I'll get those comments to them. Then by the council meeting in two weeks, we hope to have a final, final document for the full council.
Some of them didn't get them, did, did you get one, Rex?
No, I got one.
Well, so only the committee.
Oh, the committee, I'm sorry.
The advisory committee has to review it first, and then in two weeks, the full council will get a copy.
Okay, thanks. Anything else, Scott?
Yeah, over the next couple of weeks, we're going to be conducting twelve performance review of the department heads. So we've got three each day for two days this week and two days next week. The wastewater treatment plant is hoping to have a startup on the sixteenth of this month. I say it that way because there's still some items left undone that are critical path items to start up. So hopefully those get done so that we can proceed to start up.
Are the boring issues all taken care of, Scott?
Yes. Yeah. We, next Monday, the wastewater committee is going to meet to talk about the pre-treatment agreement with Dean Foods and Wells Dairy. So that we have a fairly lengthy, new, brand new, the council hasn't seen it, ordinance that will create the pre-treatment program for Lamar's. And what we're meeting next Monday on is that document with the industries there, the committee there, and getting everybody's issues on the table. At some future time, then that ordinance will come to the full council. Uh, the access road is totally done now, that includes the removal of the excess black material and pretty much everything else going to the wastewater plant. So we have now completely cleaned up the former access road through Cecil Yoder's property. That includes both his farmstead and his field. It's all been cleaned up.
But Easman is vacated then? We're done for work, yeah.
We did that last week, or two weeks ago.
But there was the cleanup left.
So it is a done deal. On the water tower, some work got suspended because of kind of an unsafe open hole creating the foundation. So that's gotten corrected now, and so they're back at work. We're going to have a progress meeting on the twelfth at one o'clock, and the water committee's going to meet on the twelfth at two o'clock to talk about issues on the water well. On the Public Works building, we're waiting for final shop drawings on the rebar, and Rex, you've always asked, when is it going to get started?
Or, or better done.
Yeah, yeah. Can't get done until it gets started, so once, first step first. Anyway, we're within two weeks, is the way the email read this morning, of taking delivery of the rebar so that the contractor can actually build the foundation and footings. On the golf building, we're at a stage where it's all been studded so that electrical rough-in can proceed. And so we're trying to sort out all the electrical needs at the municipal park to make that happen. Christie informs me that the second round of sit-down meetings with the property owners for the CBG Downtown storefront is going to happen this coming week. The storm sewer's going in for Dogwood First Edition by Mouser. And then finally, we are going to apply for a city energy management program assistance. And what that is, is the AIDA with the state, Iowa Economic Development Authority, has developed a program to assist cities in their energy management needs. And I asked Bill to summarize all the different departments that utilize energy. And it turns out that for FY fourteen, our budget was six hundred and thirty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars. And the proposed budget is eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand one hundred and ninety-two. So it's a significant amount of money we spend on energy. And what this program is supposed to do is utilize Mid-America Energy and Northwest RAC to the greatest extent possible, but to identify each and every source of where potentially energy could be saved. And so we're going to use that program, there's going to be a, a individual hired by the state that will take about somewhere in the fifteen city range. And there'll be enough of them to go throughout the state of Iowa. And so we're going to throw our hat in the basket to, to be able to call this individual and help us sort out all of our energy needs at all twenty different departments that use energy and see what we can try to save.
Does it include both the facilities and the streetlights?
Streetlights are included.
You're on that one then, Rex.
The, the top three or four that, street lighting is a hundred and five thousand. Water is a hundred and fifty-five thousand, wastewater is a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Those are the top three. Those are the top three, and then that's followed by, um, believe it or not...
Rex?
The aquatic center?
The water?
Yeah.
The rec...
I figured that.
Between recreation, indoor aquatic, outdoor pool, and that sort of thing, we're probably spending another, just about a hundred thousand.
That, that doesn't include the new wastewater treatment plant when it comes online?
Uh, thank you, Ken, this is not including that yet. So there's ample opportunity, I think, for this city to possibly look at the opportunities to save energy and do things a little bit differently to, um, help save on some of those six hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Hopefully in the new plant, though, they incorporated high efficiency equipment, motors and starters and that type of thing?
Uh, they did. And, um, and then even the booster station for the water plant is also incorporated in those new things. So, yes. Anyway, that's all I've got. Thank you, Scott. Anything else, anybody? If not, this ends our, oh, excuse me, Jason.
One or two minutes here, here. Uh, make a comment or two on, um, the latest building permit report. If you checked your boxes on the way in, you probably have a copy of it. Concentrate on that right-hand side, a year-to-date. You'll notice that there's new single-family homes. Uh, the number there is twelve, um, as of the end of May. A pretty healthy rate. What you typically see is, uh, a push in the spring when it thaws to start homes, and then you see a push in the fall again, uh, so they can get enough of it built and closed to finish over the winter time. And as of fifteen minutes ago, you heard them, they promised two to five more. So that, I mean, uh, the homes are on a healthy pace, a lot of the other things really are, um, you know, rather slow for a typical year. Not seeing so many accessory buildings, not seeing anything so far this year on commercial, whether it's new or addition. That will add to it again, but, um, it, it's going pretty good. You'll notice, one thing, because of this twelve, uh, you'll notice a lot of the subdivisions are filling up. Lots are being built on, uh, so the number of available, um, buildable lots, we could use more, so...
Has the Hy-Vee changed their, uh, plans?
Have not heard from them, other than I was in Hy-Vee the other day and I heard an employee comment that we will have a new store next year. But as from, uh, Hy-Vee officials, nothing, I haven't heard.
Shepard?
Sounds like maybe two years ago. They spent three hundred million acquiring other stores and remodeling other stores. I think they're running a little short on funding. From what I gathered, put a manager out here when we did the liquor inspection last month. But it still works, still planned, just delayed a little bit, honestly.
And your performance review is coming up for long, Jason?
Uh, you are not involved in that.
So she got Brett.
You know, she gets up there and tells us about all these homes, I figured it was a reason, you don't know.
I like that, it's for kids to do, do the work there, though.
Is there anything else? Sir, do you have anything?
Okay, on the spot.
Just real quick, I'm Steve Warren, said, uh, from Sioux City. I'm the new government relations coordinator for Western Iowa Tech Community College. So I just wanted to make sure that you put a face to the name if there's any issues that, uh, Western Iowa Tech can address that Cindy Zortman can't, or that you don't want to take up with Terry Merle before, uh, before you turn to Terry. And I also work with the Regents Resource Center. So one of the things that the, the college is doing is working with all three state universities to bring more programming, uh, to include the four-year and graduate-level programs. So if there's any, anything on the higher education side, I can also serve as a point of contact for you in the future on that.
Will you be up here or based on in Sioux City?
I'm in Sioux City.
You're in Sioux City, okay.
But I'm also going to be visiting with Cindy at our new facility and we get everything wrapped up, so, thanks.
We're, we're very proud and appreciative for Western Iowa Tech coming in.
Well, thank you very much.
They really are. They're, they're having a nice building out here, a nice, uh, and I hope the acceptance has been good so far.
Absolutely, it's good, again, thanks.
Thanks, Steve, I appreciate it. Okay, anything else? Not this time, we'll conclude our, um, council meeting and we'll go into closed session. Got to check our attorney out, see if he's honest yet, so...